All set. We're going to call the Thursday, July 19th meeting of the panel select board to order at 7:00 PM. For agenda approval, public comment, approval of the minutes, warrants, mail, town administrator report, full business. We have IT report from Chuck Watson to do with phones and stuff, appointing planning commission member, municipal website content, policy, board project list. Then we're going to do a gravel purchase and truck traffic, South Stream, and Barbara's Pond Road. We've got somebody who's going to bring us up to date on some of the town hall information. Then we're going to do personnel. But before I ask for a motion to approve that, I'd like to introduce our new town administrator, Michael Walker.
Nice to meet you.
Who's been with us for a week, so he'll be giving us a report down the line here of all the great things he's been finding out for the first week. But if anybody wishes to meet him, he will be at the Powder Valley Fair this weekend from 11:00 to 1:00. Is this Saturday, July 28?
No, no. Next Saturday.
No, no. Next Saturday.
Next Saturday, July 28th, I'm sorry. My digs are all mixed up, as usual. But again, Powder Valley Fair, 11:00 to 1:00, on Saturday, July 28th, so it'll be next Saturday. If you wish to meet him in person and have a discussion with him, of course, he's around the office and around town, otherwise, but he'll be there that day as well. And with that, I'll take a motion to approve an agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Anything to be added?
You mentioned gravel purchase.
Gravel purchase, personnel.
Okay, perfect.
Anything else?
Very good.
And we've got the town hall permission. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have anybody here for public comment at this time? Approval of the minutes of 7:12?
Seconds amended with the amendment.
You want to amend it?
Yes.
What would you like to amend?
The offices of Secretary of State, the letter that was received by them that they sent was anonymous, it was not signed.
Oh, so you want to make an amendment to the minutes to state that it was an anonymous letter?
Correct.
Okay, I get a second to the amendment? Okay. Would the amended minute, yeah, all those in favor of the amendments say aye.
Aye.
All those approving the minutes with the amendment say aye.
Aye.
I have to abstain.
Aye. So, we have three, aye. Okay. Moving on to warrants. Payroll ending 7/20/2018 in the amount of $10,490.64. Payable ending 7/20/18 in the amount of $19,276.18. And part of that is the, let's see what we've got on here, BRC, yearly dues of $5,023, partial, I don't think that is, might be all of it. The other is Santex, which does the testing over at a transfer station for $4,070. And then the IRS, they're almost $4,000. That's pretty much all that is. Can a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on any of them? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Extensions, names?
May I make a motion to turn the air conditioning off?
Yes. I would connect that.
Thank you. Thank you. It's the noise as much as anything else.
Yeah, it's a good backup noise. Okay, and now, I'm in the mail. Okay, planning commission request. We have two people have requested to be on the planning commission. How many openings do we have, do we know?
One at this time.
One? Okay, so Megan Randall and the other person is John Bashir. Mr. Bashir is here tonight. Do you wish to make any statement to the board before we do any appointments?
Yeah, I guess I can say something. I'm going to come up here.
Sure. Tell us why you want to be on the planning.
Well, I'm just talking about it and I wanted to get on it because of, I just think I could help out with the town as far as the plan goes. I mean, I've lived here all my life, grew up here, watched things happen, changes and stuff like that, so I'd like to get some knowledge of what I've grew up doing into it and see what we can accomplish. Hopefully, we can make things happen, keep the town moving in that direction it is trying to move.
And your background is in, you run businesses?
Mm-hmm.
And are you involved in the rental properties too as well, so that you had housing experience around town?
Yeah, I've had some rentals of my own. I've dealt with them since I was 10 years old with my mom and dad, and they've had rental properties and most of my life.
So you understand some of it, because that's one of the things people talk about, is the housing in town on the planning commission? And then businesses, of course, economic development is the other one?
Yeah.
That's big.
I had a tree service and landscaping business for 19 years. As soon as I got out of college, I started that, so been in business pretty much most of my life.
And what's your degree in?
Recreation major is actually what I did, recreation and business.
Okay, because recreation is the other big thing in our town plan. Any questions from any other board members? None? Any comments or anything from anybody? Okay, what's your pleasure, board? You've got two people to choose from. What do you want to do? Need a motion to approve?
How do we want to go about, about the process?
Well, the board moves to a point, usually.
Okay. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I mean, I don't know, have both candidates submitted written statements to the board in terms of their qualifications or their interests or why not?
I have, I have one from Mr. Bashir and the other one I have is from Megan.
So you have a statement from her about her?
Yeah. Mike Slattery suggested I reply for the planning commission as a current member. It's soon to resign. Please accept my formal application.
That was Mike Slattery?
That was Megan Randall.
Megan Randall, okay.
Megan Randall, I'm sorry. And then the other one was to whom it may concern from Mr. Bashir. I am writing in regards to the empty seat on the planning board. I'm interested in the empty seat. Please let me know what I need to do to apply for that seat.
Okay, so Megan Randall did not send any statement in terms of her qualifications, interests?
No, normally we don't have, people don't. There's not a formal.
But did she know that this meeting was being held tonight to determine?
Yeah, because she sent a message asking, I don't know if she sent it to me or to the board, whether, maybe Mike actually forwarded it to me, basically asking when we were going to move on this.
But she didn't necessarily know it was on the agenda tonight?
It's on the agenda, it's been posted all week, so it's in, it goes in the newspaper, so it's, yes, it's out there, it's been posted, people know. The real question comes down to, you know, I know a little of Megan, I don't know a lot. I know she was a teacher in that part, I know her father lived here in town, built here in town, here, and I think some of her family is here, her sister lives here as well.
Her sister lives here. She's active on the Powder Proud Literate campaign. But I guess I was asking the question because it only seems fair if two people applied, then two people get heard.
Well, the only reason why we're hearing Mr. Bashir tonight is because he happens to be here.
Right, and I didn't know if she had the opportunity to be here.
Otherwise, we'd be making a decision without hearing from him either.
Right, okay.
Because we normally calmly, normally we get this and then we make our decision.
And usually, do you get a recommendation from the planning commission itself? Because when I was on the planning commission, that's how it happened.
I know, I know. We have in the past, but it's not a.
But they did not make a recommendation, okay.
Well, I'm not going to say they made a recommendation or not because I don't recall, but the bottom line is it's up to the select board to appoint.
Right.
The planning commission, as it is the DRB.
Right.
And it's, and it, from my point of view, we wanted a diverse group of people on this planning commission.
It's pretty diverse right now.
You know? And Ronnie, you're.
Mr. Bashir.
I'm going to just push on, also point out that she did.
I got a motion, I see if I get a second. Get a second for appointing, Mr. Bashir?
I'd like to speak on.
Well, you make a motion, we're going to have a discussion.
Okay, okay.
You're going to second it?
I'm not, I'm not, no.
All right, there's no second on the motion.
I wanted, I still wanted to have more discussion.
Go ahead.
Because as much as I like you, you know that, but Megan did apply the first time around and there were four people that applied and three were appointed. So this is the second time that Megan has put her name in. So she's clearly very motivated to be on it. So I just, you know, I want, want to remind us that she was, and there was a motion for her last time around. And it was out motioned.
It wasn't voted for, is what you're saying? Not out motioned, but the vote was called and there was a no vote?
No, another motion was, I don't remember exactly, another motion was made and then it was seconded. There were four of us, this is what I was saying, and then two people voted on that.
Two and two, so it didn't pass, is basically what you're saying.
Well, Michelle Peckrell passed. And it was Michelle, Barbara, and who was the third one that went on at that time? Fred Miller. And Fred and Barbara passed and then we were talking, I was pushing for Megan, it was motioned for Michelle, Michelle was put on with two votes.
Okay, so they went.
And Megan was, I'm just reminding.
Well, three votes, it had to be three votes. I was here in office, I'm going to say I voted yes, even if I'm not in my head. You can come where you want, I'll look at it. Because I would have said no for sure if it was, if I was against that, and I wasn't.
But I'm just reminding us that Megan was also on the table at that time, that's all.
But it went two, two with what was here, is what you're saying, so it didn't carry.
So it didn't carry, but somebody got appointed? I'm not sure.
Nobody got, no, auditors got appointed. She's mixing, it wasn't planning commission.
I'm not mixing it up.
We had auditors. You are, because the auditors were the things that we moved on.
Michelle is on the planning commission.
And then we did the other, now.
There were two, I'm not mixing it up, there were two completely different things. We appointed two auditors at that meeting and we appointed three planning commission people at that meeting.
Okay.
The two auditors were the only ones who put in their names to be auditors. Four people put their names in to be on the planning commission.
I have to go ahead.
And three were appointed. So I'm just reminding that Megan had put her name in at that time. That's what, that's all I'm reminding. I'm not actually saying anything else, I'm not confusing anything, I'm not.
Well, you made it sound like that the vote wasn't carried properly and the vote was carried properly.
I'm just stating how the vote went, I'm not actually saying anything about how it was voted. I'm just saying it was Ron and Bob voted for Michelle, I did not vote, you maybe nodded.
I voted.
Okay, but that's not my point, I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying that there were four, three positions, four people applied.
Four people here and three voted yes and the other one didn't, so, yeah. Or it was.
But the point I'm making is not about how that vote went. The point I'm making is that four people applied, there were three positions. And Megan was the one that applied and that was not appointed to that position, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, well, at this point, what I've got is a motion without a second, so it sounds like this isn't moving tonight?
On motion for Megan.
Well, I still have another chance to speak.
Oh, go ahead.
I still have another chance to speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I want to explain how I feel about this, okay? I know both of them, I know, I know John well. I know, I know and I appreciate the fact that both of them have had input into our new town plan. I appreciate the fact that they have both showed interest in boards, I know we've put John on the DRB. My thought was to find a balance. You're on the DRB, we put you on there. I think it's, I think she's, I think Megan's really worked hard to be involved, she's attended a lot of meetings, I'd like to see her on a board also. That's my thought. And with that being said, I was, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Megan Randall to the planning commission.
You need a second for that?
I have a second, Ed.
Okay. I have a second for that. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ronnie?
I made a motion already for somebody.
Well, so you're, so you're saying no to this one?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll pay, I'll do the aye, so that three votes are on the register. Okay?
And I hope you get that this isn't, you know, I have only the most respect. We could very well have more positions opening up there.
That's all right.
I want to see you on this.
Okay. Now, moving on in the mail. Thank you, John.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a letter from, well, actually, it's not on hold anymore, it was to do with the solar. And basically, they sent down today, our lawyer has, with the changes and stuff for the lease agreement, to do with Powder Transfer East Solar. What's your pleasure, guys?
So, just so we're all on the same page, we have two parcels over there, we're going to call one east and one west?
No, east and I forget what they called the other one, they have a different one, and I just threw all that stuff away.
Okay, I wasn't at the meeting last week, that's the only reason why I asked.
No.
At one time, there was some confusion, but they had it split into two parcels.
Yeah, and I don't know what the.
That's right. The east one was qualified as a cat landfill, the other one is a brown field.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They're working on both of them, but they got the go-ahead on the east one.
Cap, okay, very good.
So are we calling them east and brown? Is that, is that a good?
No, when the next one comes in, it'll have a name on it.
At one point, we had some discussion, there was some confusion, that's the only reason why I'm asking.
Well, let me tell you, this is to do with the east, which is the cap piece of property on the, on the transfer station.
Very good, I understand now.
Whatever they're going to call the other one when we get the lease, we'll know what it is.
Okay.
If we wish to sign it or don't sign it.
Very good.
Okay, so what I need is a motion to sign this one, which is the Powder Transfer East.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Because I was at the meeting the last time when Green Lantern was here.
Yeah.
And is this the one that had the two different clauses that were being under consideration?
Yes, and.
In what way did those two?
And both of them were agreed to.
On both parties?
By both parties.
Oh, okay.
That's why, that's why it's ready to be signed tonight. One was for the, let me find the exact wording, but it was to do with the prepayment.
There's a second one that had the.
Tenant should also pay to owner a security deposit in the amount of one-year base rent.
Right.
That was one of the arguments.
And which way did that end up going?
Had gone, it's in here.
Is it the way you wanted it?
It's part of the, part of the lease, the way we wanted it. The other was to do with the discussion last week. There was a lot of other little changes they made, but they were more of not to do with the concerns that we would have been more concerned about. There was one to do with signing, if I can find the right word. It basically was, it gives us the right to.
Choose who's going to purchase it, if it changes hands.
Yes, yeah, there was a wording, the opposite.
Without, it was.
To do with reasonable denial.
Right, yeah.
But they, they used a term.
And they agreed to.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
They agreed to our, the terms that we wanted.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
No. So the, the things we sent them away with were added, were put in. Any other questions, concerns? I'll call the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carried. There's a whole bunch here that's got to be filled out to do with the day that this is being signed and notarized. The board has approved the signature of this. I would like to get a motion that we authorize our town manager to sign this with the clerk or Linda to notarize.
So moved.
Because then it can be done all at the same time.
Super great.
Got a motion, get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So this is in your hands, Michael?
Sir.
And if this, if somebody wishes to have my signature, they can have it as well, but let's get it so that we get more of this stuff passed on to you. Okay. And I have a thing from the Brattleboro Development Credit Corp newsletter to do with Mount Snow, and this, usually we get these after they've been held. What's today's date?
18.
Thank you.
It's even the 19th.
Is it the 19th?
Oh. I'm behind you. I don't know, I thought it was Sunday, so.
I've lost the whole week, so I don't know. Okay, BRC, July meeting, Thursday, July 26th, starting at 5:30 PM. And it's going to be at the Shastberry State Park Group picnic pavilion, and this is the one where our town plan and stuff is going to be talked about. And we went over it last week, that some members of the select board should be there and members of the planning commission should attend also, just in case there's questions about our town plan. Okay, so you wish to go, go. This is normally when their wastewater meeting is normally, so we won't have a meeting, so if you wish to attend, please go there.
I am not available.
Okay.
How are you doing?
Question?
I was going to ask, Ron, you're on the planning commission, right?
Yeah.
So do you know if anybody from there is going?
Mike Slattery is. And Michael just said he's gone.
He's gone.
So. Everybody's named Mike around here.
Never had enough, Ron.
Never had enough likes.
Never had enough. Were to be shared.
Okay, and moving on. Got another one for October 1st, Cassman University, and this is to do with, it says, making it happen for local leaderships for the future community developments in Vermont. Skills workshop for community success story panels, group dialogues, leadership fair, and this is to improve economy and quality of life in the communities, which is another people wish to attend.
What's the date on that again?
October.
October.
October 1st. And it is 2018, so we got it ahead of time. Okay, moving on. Town administrator report, floor is yours.
Our first, our first one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I first want to thank everybody for the welcome. I've never been anywhere and received the kind of welcome I've had here. I deeply appreciate all the kindness and I deeply appreciate you choosing me to be the town administrator and know that I'm going to put every effort into doing the right things for the town of Powder. So thank you. I wanted to touch a little bit on, now that we're operating with the town administrator, me, I spoke to staff, we'll be meeting, all staff will be meeting briefly here at 9:00 AM on Tuesdays, so we can look across the table, talk to each other on a variety of subjects, hoping we can share information, share resources, and then go forward knowing what those resources are. Coming to the board, this is, this is a huge change for you folks too, is I'll be coming in and making these reports and sort of condensing what the report is to you. I'll be working things out with the departments and identifying the direction we want to go in. But I want to make sure that you understand, you have the right and anytime we want to see anything in the deepest of detail, absolutely, all the detail will be here. Generally, I'll come in and I'll say, you know, this is what we discussed, this is the options we had, and this is where I recommend to go. And again, as much or little information that you want, you want on top of that, that's up to you. And I, if that's, if that's acceptable to you, that's, that's how I intend to operate. If you have any questions on that modification, I'd be happy to.
Let me make, what we used to do is have monthly meetings with like our road crew or our transfer station person or others. Now, I'm assuming that if things were at the level where we need that person here as well, you would bring in them, would you, when you're talking about one of the subject matters?
Absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up.
Otherwise, we really don't need them in here. If you're giving us a report, we don't need to hear it twice.
Right.
That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
But if there was something of importance, you'll make sure that they're here as well?
Absolutely. And when I spoke to them, I said, look, you're not only work here, you're a citizen, you have every right to be here, and if I'm speaking on a subject that affects you, absolutely be here or work as a team. I don't want anybody to think that I'm, you know, trying to outshine anybody or do anything on my own. Everybody's welcome to come, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the question. Moving on, I've rewritten job descriptions and I've sent them out to departments and going to meet with everybody sometime next week and discuss those, and they'll be brought back here for your review. So they were done. I've drafted a social media policy, I've given one to Chuck RET person and given one to the attorney. I have them here for your consideration. It's not for a vote, this is something that has to be digested. And at your leisure, you can come back and we can talk about it, you can email me with particular questions and you can vote on it at your convenience. Wanted to make sure that you, you have to appoint an administrator of social media, and that would be me. And you have to define what social media is for the town. My recommendation would be the website, newsletter, and email. And you, that's, that would be our only source from the town, town sponsored, town owned, and that's where official information would be disseminated. If you want another, you want Facebook, Twitter, any of the other social medias, that's, that's up to you. And welcome that. And I'll pass these down. What's next? I also wrote a conflict of interest and a ethics policy. This too is something not to be rushed, this is something that needs to have questions asked, it's to run through the attorney, it has been sent to the attorney. And we all get together and you have questions, you want changes, by all means, please do that. And I'll pass those down as well.
You've been here for four days.
Missed that.
Amazing. Sounds busy.
Have the life.
This is awesome, thank you.
Next issue, one report that we did receive, $11,189 on the timber sale fund is payment in lieu of taxes. I also want you to know that there was a class action suit filed that reportedly said that the towns did not receive enough of the fair share of that payment in lieu of taxes. That was signed and sent to the suit and to the attorney. The downsiders, we won't get anything, the upsiders, if we owed money, we'll get money. So that's being done. As I promised, every week I'll be given a budget report and revenue and expenditures report. It's not startling, it's the first week of the budget year. Our revenues to date have been .88%, and we haven't sent out taxes yet, so that's on the low side for our general fund. And our general fund expenditures, I can reach the page quickly. 6.1% of the general fund budget has been spent to date. Road revenue, we've received 3.32%, and of that, we spent 2.88% of that budget. Fiscally, moving forward, I want to get a good grasp, everybody get a good grasp of what these line items forecast, what we're going to need, what we're going to use, and trying to hone in on maintaining a stable budget. And again, I'll be bringing you a budget report every week. If there's something in there that's, needs to be fixed, we'll fix it. And let's see, what else I have? North Adams has a property, Nelson, you, I guess are familiar with this, that they put out a request or proposal to sell that property. I put some general information on the front of this packet, it's an RFP that we could respond to, should we be interested in the property. I called and checked on the property. Most of it is, as you know, is wetland. And they did put the same RFP out last year, and no one did.
What is an RFP?
Request for Proposal. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that to you. So, again, Ron, if you'd pass that down to Nelson, I'm told you, you're familiar with that.
It's about 200 acres. It's up on Dumbi Nova Road. That's where it is.
It's a watershed.
Yeah, watershed. Beg your pardon, not a wetland. Thank you for the correction.
And it's currently being logged.
Yeah, it is. And I think it's about to the end of what reasonably be logged, if I heard. I'm going to save IT for when Chuck comes up. Want you to know that I've been involved in trying, I've gotten on Nemrick, our municipal system. I have a lot to learn. It costs money, believe it or not, $30 generally per video. I'd like permission to expend $30 or up to $100 for me to view some of these videos to become familiar.
I'd take a motion for a $220.
I motion.
Because it's horrible.
I motion.
Do we need to?
$220.
For a purchase for under $100?
You should make a motion that you're going to allow him to take those courses. Remember, we said we were approving courses for their video otherwise.
Okay, correct.
So, we got a motion?
Okay, I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Which brings up the subject of expending monies that weren't, we didn't count on. One of the things that I wanted to correct, and of course, I simply violated it here. During the course of the year, anybody comes to me and says, "We want to buy X." My plan is to say, "Okay, if you want to buy X, you can't buy Y. You have to make a decision." So, we keep within the budget, and we don't have a bunch of line item shifts. And again, those options will be for you. They'll come before you.
When they come before us, and sorry to keep interrupting.
No, no, that's exactly what I'm hearing.
When they come before us, when they're saying X or Y, basically what I'm assuming is that they're going to say, "I want to expend this money, and it's going to come from this account to pay for this item."
Correct.
And what you're looking for is if somebody says, "I'm going to do it on this item," but it doesn't match what the item title is. Now, let's say it's office furniture, which would be in building.
Correct.
Maintenance and stuff. Instead, they're going to blacktop the road, or they're going to do something different. And you want to make sure that they're in the right column, is what you're...
Well, I want to make sure that we're not just saying, "Oh, let's go get that, and let's take it out of this fund."
Yeah, later on.
Right. We're going to be responsible for what we buy and when we buy it. We're going to identify where we're going to take the money from, and make sure that department heads actually tell me, you know, the reason why they're expending that money, and to make sure we hold that line item to within the budget. So, if we make a decision to buy something, I'd like it coming from the correct place in the budget. And I want to make sure that if it wasn't planned on, that we, for example, perfect example is IT. Some of the things that happened since I've been here were not planned on. And if you look at how much, well, we haven't got the bills yet, but we're going to have to be austere in that line item. We simply had to do it, but we want to make sure that we tighten our buckle for the remainder of the year, because we did spend money we didn't account for.
Ronnie, you'll be glad to hear that. He always wanted to know when the line was overspent, when we had a difficult time of finding those things.
You're going to find it.
And at the end of the year, we'd get just what you said, all this moving of money from point A to point B to sort of balance out. And what I'm hearing is, is you're going to try to solve that problem, so we don't have to worry about it at the end of the year, where we get 50 grand or something.
Exactly. That's exactly what I want to solve. Few more things. There's a grant opportunity coming out August 1st, and it's municipal project grant. I called the state, and that does align with plans to do a town hall. Mounts up to $23,000, $22,000 award. There's a webinar on the 1st that I'll be watching to see if that does align. I'm meeting with Mr. Tim Raymond and the Prudential Chair of the Palma Fire District, Ms. Dorothy Baker, this next week, or beg your pardon, August 6th. The gentleman wants to discuss water quality, and I'll be attending that meeting. He contacted me. And unless you have, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, have any questions, that's my report for the evening.
We thank you. And it sounds like you've been right at it.
Yes. This is, I was saying, this is in four days.
That's good. Okay, with that done, I'll move on, unless somebody has some questions for our Administrator. Okay, IT, Chuck?
With, two meetings ago, I believe it was, we had a discussion about web-based, domain-based email, and getting something going on that. We've taken and gone through, and I have created an account with Rackspace. We've got five mailboxes there that currently are free. They will start being charged for those five mailboxes at the end of the month. Additionally, I've worked out a budget. Mike and I, or Michael and I have had some conversations, and in the beginning, I was looking at Rackspace Basic Email for everybody. But Michael wants to use Microsoft Outlook with all the features, have a calendar that's shared among all the employees and things of that nature. So, I'm recommending that we get 10 hosted exchange mailboxes, which will cover the major employees of the town. And then we get whatever mailboxes we need, which are Rackspace mailboxes. Difference in cost, a hosted exchange mailbox is $799 plus $3 for archiving. A standard Rackspace mailbox is $2 per mailbox per month, and $3 per mailbox per month for archiving. And to meet updated state requirements, of course, we need the archiving. So, if we were to get 10 hosted exchange mailboxes and 30 Rackspace mailboxes, which would cover the list of, we did, has everybody seen this list that was generated? Okay. This is a list of people, departments, and I can print copies and pass, get those out. I didn't realize you didn't have those.
So, let me just ask one question. You're talking about 10, 10 boxes?
10 hosted exchange mailboxes.
Okay, so that's the select board?
That would...
Department heads?
And that's who has access to the calendar?
That would be the list of people that is in this top group right here.
Okay.
And it would not include...
Select what they sell.
The select board is such. We can, you know, add and take away mailboxes, okay? So, that's what I'm trying to find out. Who needs what type of mailbox?
Well, my question, is that enough? Is 10 enough?
I can add, though.
If I butt in here, Chuck, I'm sorry. I asked him to reduce that number cost. It's coming out of the line item for office equipment and maintenance.
Okay.
And I thought I'd leave that to you, whether you wanted to add that. And again, we're, this is unexpected. And I, what's the, what's the cost, Chuck, for the whole thing?
$3,118.80 per year. That's 40 mailboxes.
So, that's 3,000, that 3,000 number out of the $16,650 line item for the budget. So, day one, we're going to have to be tight. Now, I'm willing to do that. I just wanted to give you the option, because it's money spent. I do recommend it.
This is, I mean, this is the law. We have to do it. We have, it was, it was established in 2009, and there's a date by the time we have to have it done by, right?
There's two things. One is, it won't come out of building maintenance forever, because it's not that. I think when you're building something and you're putting in phones and all the rest of that stuff, that's building maintenance. When you start talking about a structure that's going to be in place, that really is for business performance, it's a little different, because that's an ongoing cost. And it sounds to me like there should be a line item, if it isn't already in our budget, but a line item that basically talks about this sort of stuff that's providing us computing services of some sort.
I beg your pardon. If I said building maintenance, I had my finger on the wrong. It's office equipment and maintenance.
But even that is not...
That's, yeah, office equipment is, again, is phones, things of that nature, computers. This is an ongoing cost to do business that's basically like, well...
In today's world, they're purchased services, okay? Microsoft is going that way completely, okay? So, our next round of computers, we're probably going to have to take and start buying Microsoft Office on a monthly basis. We're going to end up, all the companies in the world are going to paid services for their software and their products.
Well, they're following what cable TV did, so that you're going to pay a fee for each item that comes out. It's what's going to happen, and it's going to be a monthly charge.
Correct. And we're going to end up having to put that into the budget, and we haven't had those items up to now.
But you're talking about, you said purchased services. And I guess the question is, is that not something that we should be doing a line item for?
Business expenses.
Because it's different than maintenance.
I agree.
If we're doing purchased services, and it's required now for us to do that, we should be putting a line in, we'll be doing budgets here come December again, and put money in that we know what that cost is going to be. It sound like by December, we'll know what this cost is going to be. Initially, it's one of those things that all of us don't like, but it sounds like we're going to be taking that money from somewhere else.
Yeah, I completely agree. There is a line item for that. And I completely agree that when we do the next budget, that that be placed in, in the line item that will identify.
Keep that one.
All these different services.
She didn't do color out there.
That's a great observation.
You can have the color whichever one wants. I don't make any difference here.
He got one down there already?
Yes, I do.
Over here. Thank you.
Can you just explain that the 10, versus, what do they have that the other 20 or however many you said?
Well, there's 40 people, or 40, basically 38 emails on this list currently of people that are involved with positions within the town. I took the first 10. The health officer would not need probably to have a Microsoft Exchange email, because Jim doesn't use email very much. And the animal control officer, I'm not sure would either. Waste treatment, road foreman, and those people would. So, there's eight in that group, and if we want to include the select board and other things, we can. They could start out with just regular mailboxes too. They would be archived and stuff, but they would not have the ability to do shared calendars and things of that nature. And that's your choice of who you need in that list.
Got it. So, it's okay.
It just ties in with the social media policy, to the extent that if someone, a citizen decides they want to chat, talk to me, they can do so. But the privacy statement, or the statement of terms of use will pop up when they go into email, that'll say, "Here's the things you cannot do." And we administrate that. And if someone sends something profane, we can just delete it, send them a note saying it didn't meet the policy, and that help with that.
Here's where I'm at, because of the open meeting laws. Anyone who's performing a function for the municipality needs to have their email archived.
Correct. And all these accounts would have that archived.
So, everyone here certainly would have to have an archive.
They would.
And basically...
I'm saying that Jim and Steve would have a regular Rackspace mailbox with archiving versus having a Microsoft Exchange mailbox, which has all these added features.
Well, I think people from, I can speak to them, and I don't know if they agree with me or not, but the Development Review Board, the Planning Board, who has the number of meetings they have, and the calendars that they have to try to keep...
Up to date.
Versus looking out here on a board, and when they come in and out, any of these group meetings like that is certainly something I would assume that they want the calendar feature of being able to respond to it when the invitation goes out, and they all can see who's going to make it, who isn't. There's a lot of features there that Exchange allows that I can see to an advantage to those people.
It will take and push the cost up immensely, though, at this point in time.
Well, yeah, well, we need to find out what that cost is, I guess.
If you took 40 times $10.99, that would give you the basic cost. There's probably four mailboxes on here that don't need to be Microsoft Exchange, if you want to do that, because these are your planning commission, your review board, your select board, and your employees.
I don't know that the select board needs it, because we don't, we don't refer to calendars. I mean, we meet regularly.
We would rely on Linda, or someone, or Michael to keep up to date. We would respond to him, and then he would make that.
What about the chair of the DRB and the planning commission? Maybe the chair and the vice chair? Or do you think all the members need to be on that? Are there...
I use those features.
Okay, well, this...
You know, I'm an Exchange user at work. And basically, what happens is somebody will send out a request for a meeting, and we get to respond and say yes or no, whether we can meet it. If we can't, then sometimes another request will come out, and then, once you say yes, it pops up on your calendar automatically. You don't have to go into your calendar and try to remember to put it there. It's done. And then your calendar is put where you can see what your next thing is, if you've got enough things going on. I'm just trying to think, yeah, I know they do this now, and maybe, maybe their secretary will be enough to do that, that they can send the regular email, and then come back to the secretary, and the secretary keeps everything informed, so they all know. That's sort of the way they do it now. I'm just...
I'm not sure about the Microsoft and like the calendar, but I'm wondering, like, we have a emergency management director, coordinator, that oversees our emergency response plan for the town, which is continually updated, and everybody's, I wonder if that may fall under here. That's the only one I didn't see. Just a thought.
I don't know, didn't know that person or anything to add to the list. No one has mentioned him.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, I guess where I'd come from, this is, I'd like to give a little more thought, I guess, is where I'm at. I know what the ease of Exchange is. I don't know that much about Rackspace, but I'm more than well, get some more information on it. Is Rackspace strictly an archiving function? Is that what it does?
No, Rackspace hosts the email accounts, okay? And they also do the archiving. So, it's all right there. They have spam filtering and...
Well, yeah, but what other features do they offer besides the email and the archive and the email?
Oh, they have a lot of other products in their line. I don't have all that in my mind right now, because I wasn't focusing on it.
Yeah.
They have cloud, you know, file storage and all types of stuff.
Yeah, okay. Well, I do, I do agree. I think all of these things are going to be an ongoing cost, and they're going to take and ramp up the cost as time goes on. So, the choice in how we do this will have an impact for a long time to come. So, that's why I give it a little thought.
Is, can I ask a question? Is the Rackspace, if we were to put the ones that on the, the 10, and then the others on Rackspace, can you transfer them into the other at some point if we realize we need it?
Yes.
So, it might be worth starting this way at a lower cost and seeing if there's something we're missing.
Here's what I'm going to, I'm going to dump this on our Town Administrator to come back and chat and see, and by then, you'll get a little more information about what our boards do, not just the select board, but the DRB and the planning and the other type of committees we might have, and what you feel is appropriate for whether it's just the archival we need, or whether we need a calendar for them, or other features that Exchange has, which has a lot, lot more. And give us a recommendation and explain why that recommendation is being made versus us trying to debate it here tonight and make a decision tonight. I think what we need to hear is a good reason why we should only do 10, or a good reason why we should do more.
I totally agree.
I'll do that for you.
Thank you. So, moving on to the next thing.
Okay. And the other thing was just the, what phone number we publish for the phone system. And there's a, the list of numbers that we have, and you have a sheet on that, right?
I might have a sheet. There's a list of numbers we post on our website?
Yeah, there's, but when we take and, we're going to activate the automated attendant, okay? So, everybody, I will be creating a hunt group with all the incoming lines, and that group will be used, or trunk group, and those, any one line can be used for an outgoing call, or will be used for incoming calls. They'll come into the automated attendant, they'll just have to select from the five or six options in the automated attendant, and they'll be transferred to that extension.
So, basically, you look at, it's a phone tree type operation?
Yeah, it's the standard voicemail that we all use. And the choices were, we had two separate phone numbers that we had talked about before, and I'm just trying to put my finger on that, which is right there.
The one with the 939, we select them.
Yeah. We installed an additional line, so that we had a line that we could use in the beginning. That's 802-949 is 7071. And that doesn't have the 823 office code in it. We have a fax line that is 802-823-016.
11 or 16?
6111 or something.
6111 or something like that. I don't have that number in front of me, but that number gets used for incoming calls, basically, to the fax machine, and doesn't receive an awful lot of calls. We could take the 949 number, put that on the fax machine, and tell everybody that that's the fax number, which is not a big task, because of the number of faxes that come in today are very few compared to email. And we could take that 823-0116 and use that as the main phone number, published phone number for the town uponal offices.
What's the, what's the purpose?
The purpose, the recommendation I have is, as Chuck stated, we very rarely use fax, and we had to switch the numbers around, because I need a number. So, we chose the 823, for me, and chose the outlier, the 929. for the fax machine, because we know that it's not used a ton, and we wanted to keep the consistency between those lines. So functionally, that's the only change.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, a lot of things published out there already to a lot of people, lawyers and so forth, these faxes, someone recording things and so forth, even though it's not used a lot, because you're right, everything now comes through email or that way. I just want to make sure that we...
Well, if we're going to change, we're also changing our emails. I mean, that's all going to be, it's going to be a big change for all of our communications, I think.
Can you, if you put that number on, and if the people are going to get a menu when they call the eight two three number?
Yes.
The one, two, three, so you could say, if you're faxing.
We could have that, too.
And that change, you know, fax it to this number.
Our new fax number is, and it could be right in that message if you'd like.
Because that way, if somebody is calling.
Our numbers have changed recently, so I'm sorry, I couldn't help but do that. You always get that. Pay attention, because our numbers have changed.
Yes.
You know, you typically get that. But it seemed like a common sense thing to do is to take that number that's an outlier and just, so we have a commonality.
It's okay. It's, I just want to make sure that we find the best way to let the public know. And I like the fact that when they call in, please be aware that our phone numbers have changed, so you'll need to listen carefully or whatever.
It'll go out on the web.
And perhaps on the website, you could also list what the extensions go to, so that people can look ahead of time.
My number's not on the website, so we waited until that, so they put me on the website, and then we'll put a general notice out to the public, and we can highlight that in some fashion.
Okay. So when a person calls into the, to here now, what number would they call in?
They would be calling the eight two three zero one one six.
Then they would get the tree.
Then they would get the tree.
And at that point, they would pick who they wanted to contact, and this tree will be, how long, would it be just a lister's number, treasurer's number, administrative assistance's number, administrator? You know, some of these trees, you know, I call sometimes, I get a little frustrated with.
I want to make sure you understand, I am a big proponent, somebody's here, pick up the phone. Human being. I want to use that bloody thing as little as possible. I pick up the phone and call, if it's for a lister, I take a message, you know, and tell them. I don't want public calling up every time they call to get this phone tree, and we're ignoring them. Pick up the phone. That's an admonition I make to staff.
Yeah, because to me, that's what I prefer, human voice. And so basically, if somebody calls this number, if somebody is around here, they'll push a button on their phone and pick up the call and say, how can I help you?
Pick up the phone, button twice, they've got the call.
Okay, then they can forward to the lister.
Absolutely. They put on park, and then they send it to whoever.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I just, I just know that some phone trees I get on, you get to the point you get frustrated after you heard about the fifteen.
And did you want yellow or green or red?
I think, so what would happen to the existing lines they have now? Those are used in the incoming call group in order to be able to handle the incoming and outgoing calls. They'll be, they'll be put into a group.
Got in trouble.
So someone can still call? One of those numbers, and it's going to take, it's going to get here. Perfect.
And what's the cost to do all of this phone line wise? Do we pay a higher fee for the number of phone lines?
No. We're paying the fee for the phone lines already. That won't change. It's just calling Comcast, making the change on that end, making the change in the PBX or the phone system, and it will be functioning.
Okay. What's your thoughts, guys? You all okay with that?
I am.
Yeah.
Hey, Ronnie? Repeat that number, would you please?
Let me make, it's eight zero two eight two three zero one one six.
Eight zero two eight two three zero one one six. Right?
Yes.
So the only, the only other number...
If you call that tonight, folks, you're going to get the fax.
The only other two numbers.
Just kidding.
The only other two numbers we would have, we would have the wastewater treatment plant number.
Correct.
And we'd have the highway department.
And the transfer station.
Transfer station to sell.
So they would be separate numbers.
Those are separate numbers because they don't come through here.
I know we've, I know we've talked about it in the past, this is more for us than you, but in the winter time, when someone calls with a concern or a road problem, they're calling in on an answering machine, and our guys are out on routes plowing. I'm wondering if somehow, if someone calls the highway garage and there's no answer, can that be rerouted to here? Actually, if they call the highway, they get Joel, and he catches that on his cellphone.
Yeah.
Put forwards to his cellphone.
And we took, and I read...
Is that something new? I don't know, but every time I call him, it just jumps.
Well, it depends what number you list, okay? If you list the office number, there's an answering machine on it.
Right.
If you call a cellphone, he has that with him ninety-nine percent.
We would call him on a cellphone, the public would.
Correct. The public would. Today, I recorded, I set up another answering machine over there, because his answering machine was causing a lot of static and stuff. So we took one of the ones out of here that we took out when we put the phone system in and took it over there, and I set it up. And included in his message, his cell number.
Okay.
If it's an emergency, please call eight zero two whatever.
Yeah, whatever it is. Okay.
Okay, so that will be there.
Any other questions? Move forward with this, guys? You're all in agreement, right? Make it happen. Any other questions, Ronnie?
No.
Okay, make it happen. On the email, we'll try to make a decision.
Yeah.
We are the planning commission. Municipal website contact, electronic communication policy, you passed that out already, so we're not going, we got to review that. Board project list, does anybody have a project list?
I have it here. Unfortunately, I only have one copy. Please, thanks. There's actually two project lists, and both have been written on. I'd marked off some that were completed or in progress.
Yep. What he's doing, can we talk about the truck traffic on South Stream, Barbers Pond Road? Why he's making copies for us for the other?
Yes, Joel and I met with the owner of the company, and they're working it out through their insurance. What's happening is those trucks that are going over Barbers Pond and going around the, off of seven, going around those corners, they're pushing the pavement out, it's quite obvious. He acknowledged it. So we're working through how they're going to pay for that through insurance to finish fixing that.
Good. Okay, sounds good. Project list coming. You want to talk about the town hall, where you put that?
Sure.
If there's something you want to bring up to us?
Yeah, an update. I met with Michael this morning, and we discussed it. And actually, I gave him a copy of the petition that we've written up and the reasons for the petition, which is a separate sheet, and there's sixteen reasons on there. And I don't know, Michael, do you have your copy? I didn't bring it with me.
My apologies, I don't have it on here. See if it's in my bag yet.
Okay. But what we also have right now is the first go-around from Preferred Builders, and they've sent me the plans that they've done. And I'm actually in the process right now of making a few critiques on them. And actually, I'm going to meet with Tom Shoee tomorrow.
Tom?
Shoee. And Tom is really, Tom has done some very major jobs as a general contractor when he was in Pennsylvania, and I've worked with him before. And I wanted to just go over this as well, see if he picks up anything I've missed. And so this is just the second go-around. But what I have done is, Michael was concerned that, about inspections. And so I called Preferred Builders today, and they gave me the two inspection companies that they use, so that by the time the building gets here, it's fully inspected. One of the inspection companies is, it is approved by the, and cited in the International Building Code. And the other one is International Accreditation Service. So those, and for municipal building, you have to have third-party inspections, so by the time they get here, they're fully inspected. And another thing that Michael brought up today was, he asked me if there was info technology in this building. And so what we can get from Preferred Builders is a Cat Five phone wire in the rooms, or we can get RG six cabling, and/or we can have PVC conduits into the walls, and we can, with a box with cover plates, and we can run our own wires. And I am not up on this stuff. I don't know which of these you folks would feel that was most meaningful, or if either. Is a Cat Five phone wire, would that be adequate?
Chuck? You would use Cat Five for telephones, yes.
Yeah.
You would use Cat Six in a new building for computers.
Okay.
So you'd need one of each.
One of each.
Into each jack in each room.
Oh, okay. Good.
You have to have Cat Five and Cat Six.
So at this point, we'll just ask how much it's going to cost, because it would be probably a lot less expensive for them to do it than for us to do it as an afterthought.
A single drop point for all of those?
Yes.
So basically, when you run them into the room, you need to come back to a, wherever you're going to put the server.
Wherever the phone system, the servers, and other things are going to go, your resources.
So if they've done it in the past, so no, but basically, the reason why I'm stating it is, is each room will have to go back to a centralized point.
It usually called an equipment.
Okay. And since we're having a full foundation, we can just go right downstairs? That would be that good, or should we? We could run it to the office supply room that's central.
I was wondering how much equipment you're going to have in it, because you're going to have to keep this climatized in some way. Well, we can build a small room in the basement for utility costs if we had to. So it's probably better to drop it to one place. What we need to do is make sure there's power and other things there, too, because once you do that, you're going to have this utility room, you're going to have servers, and you're going to have phone systems. So you're going to have electrical type services there in the basement as well, where you drop these.
Does it, I mean, don't you think it makes most sense to do it that way, in the basement?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as it's climate controlled. You've got to keep the humidity down, you've got to take and keep the temperature controlled.
At what kind of temperature are you talking?
Well, what you've got to do is...
Just seventy or sixty or what?
Well, most computer rooms are somewhere in seventy is fine. You're not going to get much higher than that. That's where you want to keep that, but you've got to realize you've got heat generators. These things are going to generate heat, they're like furnaces. So basically, you've got to have some sort of HVAC to control both the humidity and the air conditioning. Usually, you can buy a small unit that does that sort of stuff.
Okay. I mean, would it be helpful if, since you know about this, Chuck, if you looked at the plans and thought, and figured out what would be the rest of the best location?
And a drop.
And for a drop?
I'll take a look at them and see if I can determine that.
Oh, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Because you're going to need a certain amount of power there and so forth.
Okay.
And you're going to probably be protected in some way.
And for the selectmen's room, it would be the same sort of thing, the same, I mean, I didn't know what to do about the selectmen's room. Do we, we put outlets in the floor where your table is?
Well, if you're going to have wireless in the building, you probably can get away in the selectmen's room with a few drops, but no, you don't need one for every selectmen. What you need is, if they're going to come in and, it's based on how, what's going to be performed within that room. You know, are we going to basically have a projector type thing there, or we're going to present something at some type, things of that nature, then it makes a difference on what we need for drops. Because a drop would have been, well, we're going to have the projector and so forth.
Can you guys, can your, can this board think about that and let me know? Oh, that's Chuck, too? Okay. All right, good.
He can tell you pretty much when he looks at the rooms and what they are, what the drops are.
Okay.
A single office is going to need a single drop, you know, you're going to have power, but you're also going to have a drop for the phone and a drop for the other.
Okay. All right, good. I thought maybe you just wanted to see, this is there, the picture that they gave. That's the front, the back. The back isn't exactly right, I have to fix it a bit. And, but anyways, what else? This is a, they call this the dollhouse view.
Showing the room.
So it's just, and so, okay. So that's, oh, did you happen to find that?
Yes, I passed it around.
Oh, good. Okay. I am intrigued with the last statement on this. I think it's really helpful.
Is this the only copy?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
Is that, is there a number sixteen on there that has a blank space?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay. Can you read that, please?
The difference is six thousand four hundred eighty-two, which is amounts to, and it's a question on per one hundred thousand valuation, basically what you're looking at.
But because we have been setting aside twenty thousand each year already, and a loan at a four percent interest for twenty years, it's an estimate, it's just an estimate. I came up with twenty-six thousand. So the, all we really have to raise, that we haven't been, is like six thousand a year, which on a hundred thousand dollar valuation is like miniscule.
Well, I know you've given estimates and stuff on here, but as we told you before, and we'll be going out to bid here, I think, pretty quick. We should anyways, if we're going to run this thing. And then basically, at that point, we'll have better figures, and they might come in lower. We don't know.
Oh, they might.
You never know, you know? So the bottom line is, is that until we have them, it's hard to predict what taxes are going to be or aren't going to be. We need to take and, don't get people hope up on something that we don't really realize yet, and we need to, so we need to get that information and do it. And I think that's causing some of our bellywakes here. But other than that, you know, you've got your things here, and basically, you can make a list of that.
Okay. But we need to get the petition signed.
Yeah.
And we have, and we don't have a whole lot of time to do it. We're hoping to pick up a whole lot of signatures at the panel picnic.
Thanks.
So therefore, we need to have our number, we think our number, it's, it's doable. And I've got most, I've got some quotes, I've got most all the quotes. By bidding it, maybe we can get it for less, but I think we can make that number work.
Let me see the petition.
Especially if...
When you're saying bidding, we're going to bid this out as a total project?
No. No. Because we already have Preferred Builders as our modular core, and they're about the best that you can...
They'll get a chance to bid just like everybody else. Now, you can do a preferred on what we want. We can use the specifications they use, and then see if anybody else bids besides them.
Okay.
But to be fair, what we need to do is have their specs, and then we'll bring in our P to has their specs and say, this, we're looking for a quote for this building. And then at that point, the modular home builders around here can take and put their quote in, and if they're giving you a good price, they're certainly going to beat the rest because it's where it is. What did the petition actually say?
We, the undersigned voters of the Town of Pownell, hereby petition the Select Board to call a special town election in September two thousand eighteen to vote on the following article. Shall Pownell appropriate the sum of six hundred thirty, eight hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars for a new town hall constructed with modular core and combined with town-owned eighteen forties one-room schoolhouse to be located on a town-owned bar-toe property on Center Street?
And you had the attorney help you with that?
Paul Gillis did it for me.
Okay.
I got to be honest with you, I'm confused. So how do we, so we're going to only, we're only going to bid out the modular part? How do we?
How do we bid out the rest of the...
No, no, no.
You have to bid it all.
No, if we have to bid it all out, I'll write it up. You folks have to approve what I'm written and then you have to be the one I'm understanding to put it in the paper or wherever you put it.
That's right.
And so that needs to be done ASAP, so I'll do that ASAP.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. So I guess that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ronnie, before we move on? Thank you very much, Kelly. Okay, board project list. We got your scribbles on here too, so. Which one would you like us to look at first?
Actually, these were never completely addressed to me, these are copies that were given to me. My assumption was that you folks are gonna review that and either put me to task or modify them however you see fit.
Yeah, that's my, this is my handwriting.
Yeah, there was two lists and I didn't know how one came and the other, where the other one ended up.
This one is a consolidation of several years. We brought this up each year and we, we start at the beginning of a new year with new board members, we try to bring everybody up to speed on where we were. That was the reason why I brought it up this year, with Bob and Jenny getting on board and trying to address some of these issues.
So these notes down the side were just my notes to myself, so you can...
Sure, no problem.
You can ignore any of that because I don't even remember what...
And then on the other sheet, those marks are mine and I just actually started that looking at that.
Okay.
I think we also talked about, the last time we spoke, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ronnie, but trying to prioritize some of them because we had such a lot.
Yeah, that was what we were talking, that's...
Well, yeah, that was mentioned. Put it there, put it in order, whatever order we thought was best.
Well, you know how I went to hand things off? Have you had a chance to look at these yet, Michael?
Yes, I looked at them. Some of them, they need further information, I've gotta find out what's been done so far. Points of contact, things of that nature. Obviously, the new town office, we just heard about that. Town policy updates, that's in progress. Gotta be hard to say when that's done per se because every year they're gonna be reviewed. There'll be a mode on the calendar to review policies every year. Actually, if the policy's a high-risk policy, then it'll be reviewed at like every quarter, every year, depending on...
Well, let me tell you where I was going with this.
All right.
I was going with this to have you look at these two things and if you need to talk to some of us or something, do that, but I'd like you to come back, being new to the town and looking at it, just like you just talked about the policies, some of them could be very important and need to be done right away. And provide us with what you think are the priority lists down the line and then we, and that's after talking to some of us, if you wish to make the phone call, we at that point can tell them why we think there's something else that should be moved around or up. Otherwise, we're gonna sit here and you argue about what you think is priority and I argue about what I'm priority and so we'll give you some homework.
No problem. As I said, I just recently saw these, so I haven't had a lot of time to digest them, so.
I used to make this to-do list every year in March.
Okay.
And some of it, from what I can see on here, still pertains and some probably doesn't anymore. And what we need to do is have you go down that list because there might be things we're not thinking about that still pertain to some things I think that don't anymore.
Like the large gathering ordinance is done.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, that can be closed down.
The roads reclassification?
We did a couple of those, there's still could be more.
The forest management plan, I understand we had an update last week on that? The town attorney? We've hired a new attorney, I'm not sure about the other issues on there, but...
I'll go through both of these and then I'll get some modifications, updates.
And don't hesitate to get...
And may add a few tasks.
Ask us if you have something to start. Okay. Any more on that? Move on? Okay, gravel purchase. This is something for executive session, is the personnel also in executive session? Okay, this is to be talked about before we go into executive session. If not, I'll take a motion to go into executive session for gravel purchase first.
Some of them.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.